It is nine o'clock. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we'd like to welcome all of you here this morning. However, I have to say, if you're here to hear about the goodness or evilness of wind turbines, you're at the wrong meeting. That meeting will happen February thirteenth, but you may have to wait for us to discuss CO2 pipelines. If you're looking at this board and a word masochism comes to mind, you would be correct. Now, today we're here to talk about conflict of interest. Some aspersions have been aimed towards Mr. Fairchild. And I get that because three months ago, when I'd learned of Mr. Fairchild's having dealings with wind turbines, I had him stay after the meeting and I said, Tim, if this ever comes to a vote, you're going to have to accuse yourself. But Tim's a know anything about him and he came up with an interesting answer. Tim?
That's something I should do, Steve, or you want me to? I think both can. You want to start? I'll sure jump in. I guess what happened is when I realized, early on, when I realized that this was going to be an issue with me, I knew that I had constituents who, just like most of you in the crowd, are adamantly and vehemently opposed to wind turbines. I have constituents in my district that have the exact same opposite or the exact opposite feeling towards the same projects. So because I was really concerned about what it was going to look like when I abstained from the vote, it was considering a moratorium is what was coming up, I thought. So I reached out to several different entities to get a legal opinion because I wanted something that I could put in front of those people that were so mad when I abstained, that I could say, here's why I abstained. The answers I got were not what I thought. I think maybe Steve could explain how that worked better than I, or do you want me to keep going with it?
No, I can jump in. I mean, we went back. I mean, I look around the audience and there's many of you here that have emailed me, mailed me, called me. There's a few other people I were hoping would be at this meeting and they're not here, so I could talk to them as well. But I went back to, you know, days go by, months go by. So I went back the earliest that I could find that Tim and I were discussing this issue, I believe it was March, maybe even February of last year. And what had happened was we talked to Christine Harshberger through email. I think you talked to her personally on the phone.
Who is Christie Harshberger?
She's with ISAC and she's the legal representative there and guides counties through ethics issues. She referred us to, what was Zach's last name? The gentleman that's the direct, yep, Zach Goodrich, who's the executive director of Campaign and the Campaign and Ethics Board for the state of Iowa. So we went through a series of emails with him. Basically, what we've done is through all the boards, not just, not just this board, but P and Z and Board of Adjustment, we went through a vetting process, or I did, to make sure nobody had a conflict. Need to understand that, that I've gone to everyone here, we take ethics training. We've signed the conflict of interest policy when we sign on to be a member of the county. So we have read it, we follow it. I'm required to take ethics education every year. I was required to pass a section to be a lawyer, to get my license in ethics section. And it's an ongoing thing. And I've talked to everybody here and through ISAC and their own personal training, everybody goes to ethics training. We take it very, very seriously. If anybody's read the paper and understands what I came into when I became the county attorney, understands why I would take ethics very seriously, particularly as it relates to Dickinson County. So after that discussion with Mr. Goodrich and Christine Harshberger and information they provided to us, and then, Tim, actually, I've talked to everybody here on this board individually. There's not a conflict of interest, regardless of what the Facebook postings are. I appreciate people's view. That's what makes government great, to have a voice, to have passion, to be able to express your views and opinions and, and your position on anything. But I did that. I've also talked to, I mean, before the last application was heard by the Board of Adjustment, I talked to all those members. I think there was one member who was concerned. I said, it's the same thing that I would ask a jury. Can you look at the evidence? Can you? Evidence is presented to you. Can you give a unbiased opinion? And the answer was, yeah, I'll look at what the application says. I'll look at what, what's going on and I'll go forward. One of the questions I received, the other thing, not this board, but the P and Z board and Board of Adjustment, they're volunteers. They get paid nothing for this. And I respect each and every member of the P and Z board and Board of Adjustment for what they do and, and the hits they've kind of had to take for just sitting on the board. But I went to all of them and have talked to them about issues. There was a question, there's on Board of Adjustment, there was a member named Jennifer, one of the questions, a lady that I respect very much, Jennifer Johnson Ross, at her own volition, she recused herself. Wasn't from any pressure for us, wasn't from, I mean, she did that completely on her own, if I'm correct, Megan. I found out about it through an email that she was accused herself, so. She's taken a lot of grief and, and she shouldn't because she's, she's a very good member of the public and only cares about Dickinson County. So I don't know if that's as far as you wanted, or you wanted more. I can keep going.
I don't, what, I mean, what more do we need to really say on this matter? Well, I believe you asked another entity besides ISAC and Steve. I believe you also called the Iowa Ethics Board.
Well, that's, that was Goodrich, was the Iowa Ethics Board.
Okay.
And I explained to him my position with that.
And what kind of answer did you get?
The answer that I got back from either Zach or Christie, someone said that if you own less, first of all, I don't know, we, I don't know if we're even talking about the same conflict of interest.
We are.
The issue was, years ago, I invested, I think, I believe I told Seth this, years, a long time ago too. Years ago, I invested in a small group that started a wind farm, where they wanted to build a community wind farm. And it was just such a cool idea that I did invest in that. And then nothing really happened. Now, here we are, how many years later, and suddenly Wind Farm has co-opted with Invenergy to build this wind farm. I've never served on the board. I've never had any guidance or direction. I've never really had any involvement, other than sit on the sidelines and think, gosh, I wish they'd build a wind farm. So here we are with this wind farm today. That's what I thought was going to be my disqualification from any vote that would take. And it probably still would be something that we'd look at seriously, even today. But I thought I was going to get basically the, the abstain for nothing free card from the Iowa Ethics Board on this. But the result, their, their response was, if I owned less than 5% of the company, I probably wouldn't have to abstain. In fact, it was, I got the impression I wasn't even supposed to abstain, according to Mrs. Harshberger's response. The point is that if I would abstain, 20% of Dixon County doesn't have a vote. Remember, some people in my district really want turbines, some don't. So I was actually looking for the easy way out and I didn't get it. But the key was, if you own less than 5%, and I can assure you, I own less than 5% of that company. And I've had no, no involvement in that company.
I also should point out, on, on their own dime, there's members of various boards that have reached out to their own personal attorney to see if they have a conflict, even after we've done all this research and I've talked to them. They've gone and hired their own attorney and, and researched this to see if they have a conflict, to make sure we're all on the up and up. Because we do take this very, very seriously. We really do. So. I don't know, if you got any questions, please, there's our time. One of the reasons I asked for the, I'm the one that asked for this meeting originally, because I was receiving emails and letters and I've seen your Facebook posts. And I just want to clear the air where everybody's questions are answered, if you have any. So that's why we're here.
But I think it's too, it's important that with me, there was two separate issues. The one that you've so famously posted all over on Facebook and whatnot with my wind leases, that's one issue. The others are the ones that nobody seems to be aware of, and that was the more serious issue, which was the actual ownership in a wind farm. I mean, had you done due diligence, that's the, that's the conflict you'd have really been after. Instead, when you're posting land, when you're posting leases that are recorded at the recorder's office with my dead aunts and dead uncles and dead mothers, those really, that's a little tougher to take. But let's talk about wind leases. When I signed my wind leases, you have to remember, I'm in a different category because I'm one of the few people that actually believe that we need to take steps to do something about climate change. And yeah, I'll even say climate change. These are real things. They're absolutely. So for me, money's never been my motivating factor here. But let's talk about money because that's what your, that's what your debt, your through line seems to be here. When you sign a wind lease, most people are looking at like a lottery. If you get a turbine, you've won the lottery. If you don't get a turbine, like I don't get any turbines, I've double-checked, I think the Red Rock and Invenergy people can verify that actually, I don't think any Fairchild gets a turbine on any farms in any county. So I've entered this lottery and I lost. So what do I get? I've got a, I've got two, I get two checks for under $1,400 a year, and that encumbers millions of dollars worth of farmland for 40 years. Randy Hykins will tell you, that's not a good deal, right, Randy? I think he even had that posted several times. That's not a good deal financially. That is the opposite of a good deal. People will tell you, you've encumbered your land for 40 years for a very small amount of money. So I don't really see that as the issue. The issue that you should be looking at would be the ownership in the company. And I don't know why you've missed that, but that's where we are. So that's where I'm at.
Yeah, please, please have that microphone about three inches from your mouth.
And I want to thank all of you folks that have stepped up and exposed themselves, some things that you weren't expecting to expose yourself. And I think it's unfortunate that we have a situation because there probably isn't an adequate amount of transparency and guidelines that we've got people whose reputations are getting dragged through the mud.
Eric, you know, unfairly. And I would urge the, this group to set up some ways that we make sure we have the transparency and we have some guidelines so we don't end up going down into the black hole of, that we're experiencing right now. Because it's, it's not so much, is there, is there a conflict of interest? What's happened now, from what I can see, there's a, there's a big appearance of conflict of interest, but in fact, there may not be any conflict of interest. But the appearance of that and the dragging through the mud of a lot of good people's reputation, you know, where do you, the old question is, is like, where do I go to get my reputation back, right? And if we don't find a way to go forward, whether, whether there's more windmills or not, I have my own opinion. I think there's enough and we don't need more, but that's me. But I'll tell you, we've got to have a situation so going forward, we can get people to do, to step forward and run for these offices like you folks have and to serve with pride and not have a whole bunch of crap thrown at them with no remedy to deal with it. So I would urge you as a board to really think about ways to, to, one, develop and keep the transparency on these issues. And two, figure out a way so that, to bring some order to the chaos. Because the county can't just keep going on and on and on the way it is, you know? That, that doesn't work. Because what's going to happen is you folks will drop out, other people are going to say, to heck with it, I don't want anything to do with it. No good. So anyway, I guess my point is, I urge you all to do the due diligence and figure out some, some ways to go forward so we can get a lot of good people like yourselves to volunteer and to serve in these capacities. Because there's a bigger issue of that, as opposed to whether there's a pipeline or whether there's a more windmills and things. You know, we got to look going forward. Where are we going to be five, 10, 15 years from now? Anyway, thank you all for serving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Morning. Chris Van Cleek, 2326 270th Avenue. You know, I can, I can respect the position that you are all in and the difficult challenge that we've had. And you know, in representing some of our local citizens, DC3 specifically, I think we've tried to be respectful in that. I think we've tried to use the, the right manner of approaching as we started with the P and Z committee, you know, wanting the ordinance updated and things like that. You know, we have, I see it as really two issues here. Yes, we could talk about wind energy conversion systems, and we've talked a lot about that. I think we're all really tired about that, quite honestly. It's taken way too much of our time and our livelihood and our enjoyment of life. And, but there also is the, the other issue of the carbon capture. And, you know, I do believe that, Tim, you know, you've been very transparent. I've had conversations with you, you know, you were very transparent that you had leases and we knew that. Do you have carbon capture leases?
Not only do I have a lease, but I have a check in the bank from carbon capture. And whether the pipe comes or doesn't, I keep the money. So if you're going to argue conflict of interest, it should be the pipeline company raising hell about that because if it doesn't come, I've got the money and no pipeline through my property. So don't you need to yield to the pipeline company to, to bring up a conflict of interest on? I mean, there's, there's absolutely zero way you could make an argument that I have a conflict of interest with the pipeline.
No, my point in that, Tim, is not necessarily conflict of interest. My point in that is to say that you have voted on some things, attorney support for the county, a variety of things. We're just in the middle of that ordinance. We're going forward. My point in that is that you, you've been very vocal where you stand with things. But you're also representing a lot of people. And so there are people that you're representing that, that, that don't agree with your stance and how you're, and how you're presenting that information. And so I, I guess that's part of my frustration in this process. Isn't necessarily conflict of interest, but it's that, where is that equal representation of all of your constituents? You're very vocal to those of us that are, that were not for the wind energy. You're, you know, you're very aggressive toward us and saying we stole the lottery from people and, and that we've damaged them and harmed them. But there's no consideration of the concerns of other people. And I don't care about the money, quite honestly. You take that money, you enjoy it, you do whatever you want with it. It isn't about money to me. It's about the health and safety of people. And that, whether that's the wind energy or the carbon capture, that's, that's where my heart is and that's what I care about. And I care about people in our county. And so while I think there've been some aggression toward you, and, and if that's from the DC3 group, then, you know, that wasn't intended from our group because we tried to be very professional and responsible and representing those people in our area. So that being said, I do think you have influence. I think you all have influence because you decide, you vote on who is on the planning and zoning board. And I do appreciate that they're volunteers and I can only imagine the stress that they've been under and will go under because, do we know when Red Rock will we reply, Tim?
I do not know. I'm not that closely associated with, but it seems like they would.
Right, right. But, so that's my point, is you do have influence. You have influence on those other people on those boards. You have influence just by the words that you say. And, you know, we're not allowed to look at the YouTube video following the meeting, so we either have to be here or watch it online at that point. I think as a citizen, it's our responsibility, it's our right to have access to that information. You do represent each, each of your districts and you do represent the county. And I do thank you for your service in that. But I hope that you can understand where some of that concern has come from.
I appreciate and respect that position that you're sharing here. But I also have to say that everything I've said is based on the research, the letters, the people I've talked to. I mean, I went to a DC3 meeting. How many people have done that? I listened to that meeting. I didn't get up and yell and talk to anybody. I just listened. That was trying to find the facts that I could buy into. Because I do, I do investigate my positions and I feel pretty strongly about everything I've said from this position. It's, you can't remove yourself, you're right. But you do try to base it on something that's fair and factual, so you can, and that's exactly what I've done.
And that's exactly what we've done as well with the research, the health data and all of those things also.
So you see, that's what this meeting's about. We're, we're clearing the air here, so. I hope you can appreciate what I'm saying too.
Well, I guess I would hope in the future perhaps that there would be more respect than for those of us that have differing opinions. Instead of asking us to make brownies and take them to our neighbors. Well, that might have been funny, you know? I'm not sure it was quite needed at that time.
Well, I'd have traded conversations with you the day after that vote. And yeah, that was a pretty intense, those were intense conversations I had with people that just lost turbines. That was intense.
And it would have been intense for those if the decision had gone the other way, it would have been very intense for those of us that will live there the rest of our lives there too, Tim. That's what I'm asking. I'm asking you to be considerate of the rest of us and differing opinions. Thanks.
Chris, I think you're absolutely right about being considerate and I appreciate that and we should be. But I hope that's a two-way street. Like I said, the emails and things that I've received are not considerate. A lot of them are pointed and accusing. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to have this meeting today, kind of like Tim said, let's clear the air.
Well, it's unfortunate we can't do it in a manner that is respectful for everyone. But I, I understand that if there's frustration on people's parts, you know, you are the avenue for them to, to communicate with. You know, I'm only representing me individually and a very, very small core group of people within our, you know, our group, and we've tried to, we've tried to be respectful and we've tried to do it the right way. P and Z and, you know, use the process. The government will work. I've been told that.
Well, and, and I think our discussions that we've had have been respectful to each other and I appreciate that. So I'm not, not casting that towards you at all. And there, there are others that, and I think I try to respond as quickly as I, I can. We went and reviewed for the budget the other day. Last year, we had 600 new criminal cases we had to do for Dickinson County. That doesn't even count the old cases we have that we're working on. So we try to work with the public and help everybody as best we can within our means.
Right. But this is the avenue for us to ask questions.
And I'm, and I'm happy you're here.
You can appreciate the, the frustration as far as like the transparency, and I know there's been questions about that as well. You know, but what is our avenue for asking, you know, to have those things?
Part of it is we're spending so much time in the office responding to question after question. Let's just, let's have a meeting. Have everybody come ask all the questions you want to ask now?
Right.
And we'll do our best to answer everything you want. And that's why we're here today.
Yeah. Well, and for us, I mean, we didn't know this decision was coming, obviously. So as of the agenda going out, you know, that's all we knew. There was no, so when the agenda went out? Yeah. Yep. All right. Thank you.
In all fairness, thank you for your comments. So thanks for participating. Is there anyone else?
Hi, everybody. I was hoping we wouldn't be here today because it is the fifth Tuesday of the month, which Steve informed me that we normally don't have a supervisor's meeting on that day. So.
I told him about it too.
But, you know, we do have a conflict of interest policy for the county and it's a really good one. You know, I've, I've, I've read through it. It is, it is a good quality conflict of interest policy. It covers a lot of areas. And, and it doesn't just say an interest in a company. It says lease payments in here. Okay? If you read example number one on a conflict, and wait, let me go back here a second. It, there, there is, you know, even if you have a perceived conflict, it, it needs to be considered a conflict. People, people have to have confidence in the decisions made. And if there is a perceived conflict, that is of utmost importance. That's as big as a conflict. And it says it right here in your policy. Example one, an employee or a person in a position of authority may benefit financially from a transaction between Dickinson County or an applicant for permits or the special considerations by Dickinson County and the board elected official staff member or others closely associated with the board elected official staff member may be affected financially. Family members or their businesses or other persons or the business of persons for whom the board elected official staff member is closely afforded, associated, could benefit from similar transactions. So it's not just talking about ownership in a company. It's talking lease payments. It's, it's talking family members and it, it is, it's broad and all encompassing. So we have it. You guys were supposed to have signed it. And these other conversations that are off to the side, which we're not getting any expert opinion on, we're getting secondhand reports are concerning. That, that, that we cannot feel like we have the confidence that, that there are people on this board making decisions in the best interest and being able, I shouldn't have to question whether or not you can give up your conflict of interest. You should step down. And that, it doesn't just mean from the vote. That means from discussions. It says right here, it, it also includes discussions that happen in this decision-making process. So when a company comes in to talk to the board, the person with a conflict shouldn't be in the room influencing what is said and done. So we, we have, there are concerns. And those concerns are strong and I feel like they've been just waved off with excuses. And we can all give excuses for our behavior, but we shouldn't. It's still our behavior. Need to take responsibility for that and we need to make sure that our decisions are pure of heart. Any questions for me?
I believe I'm pure of heart. I'm not sure which vote and which discussions you're referring to, but.
Maybe you want to take that, Steve?
Well, Barb, I, I, may I talk? Yeah. Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. As I, as I pointed out, we early on looked at this. I mean, I was able to go back and I think it's February, but March is what I could document in my email string that we looked at this. We, a conflict of interest policy. I appreciate your words on that. Thank you. But we take it from that and then we go to the code and we go to the state level for guidance. I mean, I do that all, I do that fairly frequently where I talk to the Attorney General's Office.
I mean, I do that all, I do that fairly frequently where I talk to the attorney general's office on a criminal case, for example. So that's what we did here. And we took the guidance. They're aware of our conflict of interest policy, but they're also aware of the code. And they pointed out, they pointed out where it's not a conflict for anyone on our boards. Cause we were pretty, I mean, we came to this table about this question in March of last year. I mean, all of this that brings us to the head for this meeting has probably been in the last, I'm gonna say 90 days-ish, maybe a little more than that. So we've looked at this and we did take measures to make sure we're okay, you know? If it was not okay, and Mr. Fairchild has said to me many times, at any point, if I thought he was not okay to tell him. And when I rely on the ISAC representative of the ethics board, Mr. Goodrich, take their guidance. At this point, you know, things change, but at this point, my advice to Mr. Fairchild was, we don't have a conflict. Because that's what I'm being told from people that are more knowledgeable in Des Moines.
I still read this and there's a conflict. And I was here, I was in the room in that, I believe, March meeting when you had, March of 2022 probably or?
Probably 23, Barb.
Yeah. When you had discussed, and I believe that was on the pipeline. That, that conversation. I was here when that happened. And I didn't agree with it then, I didn't speak up, but I didn't agree with that decision then. And I don't agree with it today. So.
One of the good things, I think, Barb, is that you and I disagree on things probably on a weekly basis. But at the end of the day, you and I are civil to each other and we do not cast aspersions. I take great pride on my nomination papers, the very first signature is who, Barb?
It was me.
You. So I take great pride with that.
Yeah. But I, I mean, I can disagree with you.
Correct.
On this decision and I do, I disagree.
So I have a question, Barb. How far would you carry out conflict of interest? My question is how far would you carry that?
Well, it says here to the person or family.
Okay. What about, you've heard of the, the good neighbor policy that some outfits, be it wind power or pipelines, pay to neighbors even if they're not going to get a pipeline? Would a person have to disqualify himself because your neighbor's gonna get a pipeline or something like that? And they're going to reward you with a good neighbor policy?
Yes, because you took money. You were financially, it's.
If you never went after it, if it, you know, if.
With the company asking for it.
Okay. I just, I wanted to have your opinion. Okay. I, I can't say that I agree with that, but.
It says right here, financial interest. That is a financial interest. If they just said they were gonna give you a thousand dollars for your birthday, that's a financial.
Huh. Chuck Grassley sat on the egg committee for about a half a century. He's been the chairman of the egg committee. He's taken $357,000 in farm subsidy checks directly from that. Should, where does that fit into this?
I don't agree with that. So that, this is.
But in Steve's position, you're basically taking everybody out of the county. There's nobody, if you start doing what, if everybody that gets a good neighbor policy gets a check, you've eliminated everybody. There's nobody in that half of the county that would have an option.
Yeah, because.
But in the county, then, you know, you're throwing out situations that are not viable. We've been sort of pipeline, they're not able to hear what, sorry, yeah.
An example.
At this point, you're throwing out situations that aren't viable. But if we have a vote board that is fully compromised, we need a new board to make those decisions.
DD 61 had a major renovation a few years ago. Three of the board members had land in that district and three of us paid, should we have all recused? Who would have voted?
You may have had to, you know, you have, you have those, you are, you are representing those drainage district people. They, they gave you what they wanted and generally you do what they want in a drainage district situation. Personally, I don't think the supervisors should be drainage board trustees. That's a whole different thing. I think they should have a separate drainage board trustee, but.
I think the finance board would agree.
Yeah, yeah. I, yeah.
Are you volunteering?
You wouldn't. No.
What a thinker.
But I, I, I think, I think, you know, they'd be better served by, by voting in a board of trustees that handle drainage districts, similar to the P and Z board or to the, the, you know, other boards in the county. But I don't have the say over that. So, but yeah, you know what? If a whole board is compromised, then you need a new board.
Anyone else? Steve?
I, I came because I didn't know what this was about. So I was hoping to learn some stuff because, you know, I'm elected. It's not what I'm here for, but I'm trying to learn and understand this. So I'm getting a feeling that, Tim, this is towards you. So, but, but I did want to point out that, Tim, you're, you're, I follow your lead with what you did with waste management and the sampling that took place with the oil out there. I was here at that meeting when they were having the discussion about the oil going in the landfill and you walked out of the building. I don't know what your conflict was, but you had a conflict of interest there. I don't know what that conflict was, but you walked out and I asked somebody why you walked out and they said, because you had a conflict of interest. So at city council meetings, when I've got a conflict of interest, I step up and I walk out the door. I thought that was very good. And I, again, I don't know what your conflict of interest was there. I don't know why you walked out of that meeting, but you did walk out of that meeting. So Steve, I had one question for you, which, going back into the training that I've been through for being on the city council is, Iowa code sets the rules, but cities and counties can go stronger. We can go less, but we can go stronger. And I think that's kind of what Barb is getting at is what I understand is, yeah, the Iowa code is here, but we can set the bar higher and it sounds like the county set the bar higher. So if we're falling back to the state codes, then do we actually need the county, county conflict of interest policy?
We have the county conflict of interest. So when this issue came up, we went to our guidance, which is the state ethics board. We went, we went to represent that and we went through all of that with our conflict of interest policy in hand.
So that, that was. They gave you, they gave you recommendations on what your conflict of interest policy was, not what the state code was.
They talk more about the code, you're correct, Steve.
Right.
But I took their guidance and I'm still taking their guidance. And that's, because that's what they deal with every day. That's what they bring. That's, they're the experts in this.
The one thing that stuck out to me when I went through the training that we've gone through, through the Iowa League of Cities and that type of stuff was that, you know, a government employee and a government official can't serve two masters. And so that's really what it gets down to. And I've always gone off of, and I think this is where you stepped out of the meeting, Tim. I'm not a hundred percent sure for that, but perception of, perception is reality when you're in a government position. So it doesn't matter if it's the real deal or not, but if it's perceived, the public believes it. And so that's why even when I've got a perceived conflict of interest, I'm walking out the door to get away from that because I just don't want the public to have any question of my, my internal ethics. And so, but I do remember that, Tim. And that, you know what I'm talking about, that waste management thing. And I don't know what else it was. It was the soil, water sampling portion of it and the oil stuff. And you got up and walked out and I don't know what your conflict of interest was, but that, that's what I, I do at city council meetings. Is I, I get up and I walk out because I saw what you did and it made sense. So it got rid of all the conflicts.
I can speak to that a little bit. The situation there was, I didn't have any of my constituents that were strongly supportive of that move to hire an engineer who specializes in remediation of oil spills. Paul Johnson was really key on that and he had looked all over the country for someone that could do that work. I said, well, I do know a guy, but I hate to tell you. And it is, in fact, was my cousin, who we then, I left the room because I didn't want to have an influence on my cousin getting hired. That's pretty, pretty up close. It's not secondary, like I would consider the wind to be a much more secondary issue as far as the connection. And in fact, not only did the board hire him, but Paul Johnson just went on and on about what a great guy he was and great study he was. And we were so happy, we screwed him out of the last 2,000 bucks we owed him, never paid him. So that's kind of why I left the room. That, I'm sure we can find the bill where he sent the extra bill for extra work he did that we voted not to pay him for. So I think there's a little difference in the two. I get where you're going with that, but I do think there's a little difference personally. I guess Steve will have to interpret that.
You asked me how close the connection is and he just said his cousin. Right?
That's what I said.
Yep. It's cousin. So Steve, there's your answer.
But, you know, it, it does say, number two, under our conflict of interest policy, the appearance to outside parties. Appearance. And I think Steve mentioned appearance.
More questions? Morning, everybody. My name's Eric Jansen. Got to know you guys pretty well. So I just had one question, this is more directed at Steve. I took one law class, Jan Ed undergrad at Iowa, about 16 years ago. And that's where my law knowledge starts and stops. So I know Jennifer Johnson Ross, she was on the Board of Adjustment. She recused herself from taking a vote. Is there, or she just, I think recuse would be the right description in a way. She just didn't, she abstained, I guess. She didn't, she didn't show up to the meeting, she wasn't there to vote. Is there any particular reason why she decided not to vote, other than my understanding is she had winter bond leases? And was that kind of a personal choice? Yeah, that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Yeah. My understanding, and I have specifically to that question and that issue with, with Jennifer, I, the only thing I learned from Jennifer was, I believe it was an email from Megan that I received, that she was gonna recuse herself. Ethics is a type of thing that it starts with a person personally, their moral code, their ethical code. You know, and there are two different, they should be the same, you would think, but they are different. So when, when somebody on one of our boards comes to me or I get information that they want to recuse themselves, I don't question that because it's a personal decision. And when she made that decision, I, I wish she would have stayed to vote. She could have sat here through the three nights like the rest of us. But I'm not gonna question Jennifer if that's what the position she wanted to take. Just like when other board members come to me and say, do we have a concern? Is there a question? It is a personal decision and then we go investigate to make sure that there isn't indeed an ethical conflict. And that's what we've done.
Okay, so her, so her leases wouldn't have gotten in the way of, of being like an ethical, is what you're saying basically? Or I mean, not ethical, but.
I've never got that far in the discussion with Jennifer about exactly what her leases were and/or what she received or what her conflict was. It was just declared she had a conflict and I left it at that because it's a personal decision to Jennifer. And like I said, like I said earlier, I have the utmost respect for Jennifer and her service to this county. I do.
Okay. Thanks, appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Hopefully my voice will hold out. Randy Hykins, you know me. Thanks, Tim, for clarifying that about your cousin Jim, who was the environmental engineer investigating that. I'd wondered about that for some time, what's going on here? I guess I kind of know the story now. Nevertheless, that was your cousin. So I, I've known Jim since before I started school. He's a neighbor of ours, lived a mile away. Jim's a good guy. But it still does show that, you know, you might have a little, little favor there towards, toward a relative. I didn't know if we'd even be allowed to speak this morning. But I noticed the January 17th, about a year ago, a motion was made by Steve Clark to approve a permit application for hazardous liquid pipeline, pipeline, electric transmission line, communication line, underground service and other similar installation on, over, across or beneath drainage districts in Dickinson County. Fairchild vote seconded the motion and then voted in favor of it. And I, I, I just think that's gotta be a conflict again because, now this is about hazardous liquid pipelines. Of course, you got a little, you're involved with that a little bit, but I imagine this motion could apply also to wind turbines, putting transmission lines underneath drainage districts. I don't, I don't know if it did or not, did it? Did that? Okay. Like I say, you clarified what I was thinking about with, with Jim, your cousin. But I want to go back a little bit to what the one gentleman said about dragging people through the mud. We're not about dragging people through the mud. We feel like the public is being dragged through the mud if we're not allowed to speak, if there is no dialogue. If there does appear to be conflicts of interest, we feel like we're being dragged through the mud. I've, I'd rather just stay home and mind my business and farm and build my machinery and go fishing when I like to go fishing. I don't like to come to all this stuff. I really don't. I like to get involved a little bit and do my civic duty. Got two boys that are Eagle Scouts. I believe in community. I believe in, in government. I've said enough.
Randy, to that vote you were talking about, we believe that's when we passed the ordinance regarding going across drainage districts?
Yes.
Okay.
Was to protect the county.
Yeah, and it really protects the county. I will tell you that I'm the one that wrote that ordinance.
Right.
It's only eight pages opposed to like 28 because it was too long at the beginning. But when we were putting that together, at the suggestion of Tim Fairchild, if you read, I think it's subsection G, I remember this ordinance very well.
Right, thank you.
There's a million dollar bond that has to be put up. That was at the urging of Mr. Fairchild to make sure that these drainage districts were protected and they wouldn't be spoiled. So that million dollar suggestion was put in there and adopted. The original suggestion came from Mr. Fairchild for the million dollars to be put up. So.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Thing with the drainage districts is not all drainage goes into drainage districts. There are many drainage areas out there that are not in districts. They're handshake agreements by farmers, they've been done many years ago. And it doesn't probably protect those. About the conflicts, but we're off topic. As far as conflicts of interest, does it make it easier to, for someone to benefit financially on? to, for someone to benefit financially on this board if they are voting for something like that? You see, this, this is where we get into trouble with conflicts of interest. Um, anyway, I, I think there's been, there's been conflicts of interest here. I, Tim, we, we've been talked about, Steve possibly, you've got some land in on some of this stuff too. Um, it looks like it's conflict of interest and in, in any appeals process, these things be brought up. It's, it's on the record. It says, look in the minutes. It's there. So.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Patrick Kelly, let me make a suggestion. Why don't you establish some sort of an ad hoc committee made up by, I say, a majority of you people and two or three people from DC three and take a stab at like going forward with a, with a, a new document with respect to how you deal with conflicts of interest. In other words, I'm saying is reach out to try to develop some consensus. Because if you don't, what's gonna happen is we're gonna have just an unending political struggle here that's gonna get much nastier and much uglier. So I'm just saying, think about it. Maybe you could set up an ad hoc committee. You could get some people from the neighborhood that are very concerned about it and let's try to move forward. I worked for a long, long time for the Teamsters Union and I've done a lot of negotiations and I'm not volunteering to do it, but I can tell you when you've got conflicts, you really need to try to mediate and do the, do the steps forward so you can build consensus. Because if you don't build consensus, then all you're doing is establishing more conflict. And that's gonna make for a lot of political, uh, uncomfortability, you know, for the electants. And it's also gonna discourage people from getting involved in Dickinson County because these overall issues are not gonna go away. So I'm just suggesting that you can think about it when you caucus or whatever, uh, maybe do an ad hoc committee, get some, a couple of people from DC three that, that they're obviously concerned to step up and work with you. And I'm sure you guys can, you all can come away with something better than what we have. Because otherwise I just see a kind of a ad nauseam, you know, process here that's just gonna get worse and worse and not get better. Anyway, thank you.
So number four in your conflict of interest policy is the procedure to manage conflicts. Um, and, and it said the full board to determine whether or not to take no action to disclose the situation broadly and invite discussion or the person that is, that has a conflict must refrain. So it is up to the full board here in procedure number four to determine what's next.
In subsection B, Barb, I would say disclose the situation more broadly. That's what we're here for. We're here.
But, but also it is, it is
to decide whether or not the conflict is is acceptable to the board or not. The full board.
Only one? If not, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I've got one other thing I'd like to add. Through all of this, I think that the biggest conflict of interest I have goes back to something that we're not even talking about here. But through my life, I've sat back and watched curiously and very interestingly, when they were gonna put a sewer in around Lost Island Lake. And I listened to the arguments against that sewer. And then later on, they had the same arguments around the lakes here. I can remember Lower Garre in particular, my father-in-law had a place there and listened to the neighbors argue against that sewer. The reasons mirrored very closely the arguments that I make on climate change and air pollution today. So there could be a demonstrable connection between reducing your greenhouse gases, your, in other words, using wind turbines, these types of energy to actually lowering the death rates, asthma, et cetera. And these can all be, these are proven. You can document them. And that is the reason that I got started in the wind energy in the first place. That is where I'm at and I've always been there. So at the risk of sounding like those people trying to tell people that a sewer would be a good idea around a lake, I'm gonna throw in with them. The other people would have been happy today if we still had raw sewage floating in Minnewashta and Lost Island Lake. And you can fact check that stuff. That's all public record. It's out there. We'll check into those arguments. And I'm saying that my grandchildren will be more proud of me today for what, or more proud of me in the future for what I'm doing today than they will be for some people. Thank you.
Um, geez, there's a lot in that.
We've heard a lot from you though.
Oh, we hear a lot from you all the time, Tim.
I get paid to do it.
Yeah. Well, I pay your salary also. So do the people in this room.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, you know, climate change is still debated, no matter what anybody says. It is still debated. CO2 is not a pollutant. CO2 is a gas of life. Without CO2, you wouldn't have your corn growing. Okay?
I didn't come here to debate the climate.
Oh, well, yeah.
I mean, way off subject.
Well, who brought it up? Jeff? Who brought the subject up? Who's trying to force the climate change issue upon us?
So we're going here now?
We are going here because somebody else went here and decided he was gonna push it and make it his main reason, Jeff. Okay?
I thought he was citing, he's always been with wind energy and clean energy.
Yep.
And that was the only comment he was.
He used, he, he used the fact that client, he said, climate change is real. Climate change is why we're here. How many wind turbines does Dickinson County have to have itself to fight climate change? How many more wind turbines does Iowa need compared to what Texas has to fight climate change? Why do we have more wind turbines than our surrounding states? It's because we don't protect our land. It's because we don't say, you know what? We have value here.
I'm still trying to figure out how this works in the per, uh, conflict of interest. Have I missed?
Well, you missed it because, because Tim was trying to make a point and force climate change down, it, it make us feel guilty, make us feel guilty.
Right wing view. Come down on all of us for this, huh?
He was using his left wing view on all of us here, Jeff. I didn't want to go down, we had never hit this area at all. We were talking about our policy here and what we're doing in Dickinson County about this policy. And he had to get philosophical on some.
Asking for my reasons why I, why I am where I am and I argue.
You're asking for my reasons why I am where I am too. And it, I won't agree with you.
Has an issue in clean air.
Our air is beautiful here in Dickinson County.
I've got one here.
No, no, I wanted to make a comment.
Oh, okay.
For those that don't know me, my name's Steve Clark. I'm the District Four Supervisor. That's where a majority of the turbines that are going proposed to be built are going to be in, in my district. Uh, I see a lot of people that have contacted me here. I've got a tremendous amount of people from District Four that have come, contacted me. They don't show up. They're busy working. But they don't show up to be vocal, but I have actually had more people contact me pro wind turbines than against. You know, I was elected because evidently people trusted me in the message I was putting forth that I would represent all the citizens of Dickinson County. I haven't made that decision a hundred percent yet, but I do represent all the district people first and the citizens of the whole county second. And I think this is something we all need to look at, you know? My, my people, some of them will suffer because of wind turbine denial. Some of them will be happy about it. I have to weigh both sides of that fence and not try to get involved in the weeds getting there. You know? People trusted me to make this decision and I take real umbrage at people that are in my opinion, defaming Mr. Fairchild for his opinions and views. I've known him since he was a child. And I have never known him to do anything in any of his public service to benefit himself, his family, or anything other than the public's good. Whether he served in the city council in Terrell, he served on, uh, planning and zoning, I believe in the county, or was it Board of Adjustment?
Planning and zoning.
But I have never known him to do anything to have his motives questioned. And, uh, I, I take real offense to that. So that's all I want to say.
Okay. Thank you. Jeff, did you wish to make a motion?
Motion that we adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kim. It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion. Hearing none. Jeff? Kim?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And Bill?